You're saved by the bell, Josh. There's Commissioner Schweikart. Okay, so we'll come to order. Welcome to the April 20th, 2021 Meeting of the Salem Planning Commission. Shelby, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Augustine.
Here.
Commissioner Griggs.
Here.
Commissioner Heller.
Here.
Commissioner Copcho.
Present.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Pollak.
Here.
Commissioner Schweikart.
Here.
And Commissioner Slater is absent, excused. We do have quorum.
Thank you, Shelby. And it doesn't look like we have anybody signed up to register on the public comment. So we'll move then to the consent calendar. Commissioner Schweikart, do you have a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second by Levin.
Thank you, Commissioner Levin. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none. Shelby, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Augustine.
Aye.
Commissioner Griggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Copcho.
Aye.
Commissioner Levin.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley.
Aye.
Commissioner Pollak.
Aye.
Commissioner Schweikart.
Aye.
And Commissioner Slater is absent.
Thank you. Motion passed. Moving on, I'll open a hearing on case number VAR DAP 21-01 on Mildred Lane, 1355 Mildred Lane. Are there any ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest to be stated? Seeing none. Shelby, would you please read the statement of criteria?
This is a public hearing to consider an appeal of the hearing officer's decision on a variance and Class II driveway approach permit, case number VAR DAP 21-01 for a property located at 1355 Mildred Lane Southeast. The criteria applicable to this application are found in Salem Revised Code, Chapter 245.005-D for variance and 804.025-D for driveway approach permits. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing with statements or evidence sufficient to afford the Planning Commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUPA, on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony. The Planning Commission will then either continue the public hearing or leave the record open for at least seven days.
Thank you, Shelby. Ms. Long, are you ready?
I am. Let me see if I can get my screen up.
By the way, I did listen to the hearing with the link that was provided to everybody, and you've got a lovely background for your presentations.
Oh, thank you. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sally Long, and I'm a planner with the CD Department. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the appeal of the hearings officer's decision denying variance and Class II driveway approach permits for property located at 1355 Mildred Lane Southeast. At this time, I would like to enter the staff report along with his attachments in this presentation into the record. The hearings officer issued a decision denying the request, and the applicant filed a timely appeal. The proposal includes a variance and Class II driveway approach permit requests to allow a single-family approach for, or excuse me, to allow a driveway approach for a single-family residential use onto Mildred Lane Southeast, classified a minor arterial street on the Salem Transportation System Plan where a driveway is not allowed. The subject property includes five tax lots as one legal unit of land and is approximately 7.6 acres in size. The property abuts Woodside Drive Southeast, a local street to the east, Flarestone Drive Southeast, another local street, dead ends at the property on the southwest corner. The subject property is bisected by Mildred Lane Southeast, a minor arterial street, and occupies areas on the north and south sides of Mildred. The property is split zoned, RA, residential agriculture, RS, single-family residential, and IC, industrial commercial. Surrounding properties include residentially zoned properties to the north, south, and west, and commercially zoned properties to the east. The subject property is undeveloped, and the current configure of the property, shown here outlined in red, consists of five tax lots as one legal unit of land. Walms Creek is located within the subject property. Surrounding properties to the south and west are developed with single-family residential subdivisions. The development to the north includes more single-family residential uses and a multifamily residential complex that abuts the northeast corner of the subject property. Properties to the east are developed with commercial uses that include a mini storage, an RV dealer, and boat and motor repair facility. A partition is proposed to divide the 7.6 acre property into three parcels, with parcel one proposed to be developed with a residential subdivision, and parcels two and three proposed to be developed with residential and commercial uses. However, the partition plat has not been recorded. Therefore, the current legal configuration of the property is shown here outlined in red. A preliminary shadow plat for Tony Estates subdivision was submitted with the partition for parcel one. The plan shows access to the subdivision is being proposed from Flarestone Drive Southeast, although no land use application has been submitted or approved for this proposed subdivision. The area outlined in red is the area being discussed under tonight's presentation, a lot configuration that does not exist. The property also received approval for apartment units under a previous land use case for proposed parcel two, which granted a driveway approval to Mildred Lane. The proposed driveway location under review this evening is shown in red on this slide. Approval was also granted for the development of a two-building apartment complex on the third proposed parcel. The proposed driveway location under review this evening is located on the north side of Mildred Lane Southeast. This is an image of the site taken from Google Maps. The red arrow shows an approximate location of where the driveway is proposed along Mildred Lane Southeast, looking toward the northeast. I took photos of the site, and this is looking southwest from Woodside Drive Southeast. The driveway location on Mildred would be on the right side of your screen. Here is another view of Mildred Lane Southeast, looking west from Woodside Drive Southeast. This photo is taken from the opposite direction toward the east. And this image from Google Maps shows where Flarestone Drive Southeast, a local street, dead ends at the subject property on the northwest corner of the lot. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. It shows a lot that does not exist today and a driveway not permitted by code. The subject property is located within the South Gateway Neighborhood Association and is not part of an HOA. No testimony was received from the Neighborhood Association or surrounding property owners. Land use applications have certain submittal requirements, as discussed in the staff report on pages three through six. Is imperative to note that the applicant was notified on January 27th, 2021 that the applications, as submitted, did not meet these requirements. On January 29th, the applicant provided written notice stating no additional information would be provided and requested that the applications be deemed complete as submitted. The applications were deemed complete for processing on January 29th, 2021. The hearings officer found that items submitted by the applicant were either partially submitted or not submitted at all, and there was no evidence in the record that these deficient materials were corrected. The hearings officer also found that the evidence in the record does not demonstrate the applicant satisfied the substantive review criteria. The applicant has not submitted any new evidence into the record for this appeal. A request for a variance must meet the approval criteria of SRC 245.005-D. The hearings officer found the applicant had not adequately addressed this criterion as outlined in the hearings officer's decision, and that the development, as submitted, is not allowed as the lot configuration has not been approved. For these reasons, the hearings officer found that the variance request was not justified. A request for a Class II driveway approach must meet the nine approval criterion of SRC 804.025-D. The hearings officer found the applicant had not adequately addressed six of the nine criterion as outlined in the hearings officer's decision. Therefore, the Class II driveway approach request is not justified. The appellant assigns error to the hearings officer's decision that the denial was based on an indication that not all required application information was provided and that the lot does not exist, stating they provided all required information and that the lot is part of parcel one of Partition 18-12, and the partition is in the process of being reviewed and will record soon. However, the single-family lot that they are showing is not part of that partition. This is the partition that has been tentatively approved with these lot configurations. The lot that the applicant is showing will not be created by this partition. Therefore, the recording of that plat is irrelevant to the decision tonight. Therefore, staff recommends you affirm the decision of the hearings officer denying the variance and Class II driveway approach request. That concludes my presentation. Myself and Tony Martin, the Assistant City Traffic Engineer, are available for questions.
Thank you. Questions of Ms. Long at this time? If we could use the erase the hand, that's so much easier. And I have one question clarifying just the nonprofit builds, building complex that's going to be to the side of that. We approved that driveway onto Mildred because of the number of trips each day, the 80, the 38, it was over 30 ADTs.
I'm going to defer to Tony Martin.
I remember the case. I just can't remember if that was an issue.
Hi, Tony Martin, Assistant City Traffic Engineer. I think the biggest reason was that if it was on Woodside, it would be so close to the stop sign.
Okay.
So in this particular instance, even though Woodside is a lower classified roadway, not meeting the spacing criteria was okay because it met the 30 vehicles and it was a better location.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Heller. You're on.
Thank you. All right. I didn't quite understand what had been submitted as the going to be approved, a plat versus what we're looking at today. You said there was a difference, Ms. Long.
Okay, so this is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant for this variance and driveway approach permit.
Okay.
This lot configuration outlined in red is not, has not been approved under any land use decision. Let me get to this. This is the partition that was approved and with these three different parcels, and the area right in this area is where they're proposing this driveway for the single-family development.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? In that hearing that I listened to, the original administrative hearing, the applicant stated that they would be willing, one of the concerns was having to back out onto Mildred. And Mr. Grin stated that they would be willing to create a driveway that was, would allow a turnaround. Is that just a moot point because of the points that you've already covered? I mean, even if they would do that, it's still, there's still conflicts with the case.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have a hand raised? I don't see one at this time, but we'll have another opportunity to pass to you, Ms. Long. So would the applicants like to speak to the commission and, as you know, Mr. Grin's name and address, and you have 15 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mark Grin, and I'm with Multitec Engineering. And our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast here in Salem, and we are representing the applicant in this project. And for a project that, that from our side is not all that complicated. It is, the property in a way, and the configuration is, is fairly complicated by virtue of the original property owner that owned all this property, and then the city built Mildred through there, and they didn't legally partition the property, create separation. So there's, there's parcels on each side of Mildred that are all still one parcel. That's why the partitioning was going through. The partitioning is at a stage where the miler has been submitted to the city, and it's, and the final technical review is being completed, and then that will be recorded. That aside, that, that really doesn't change the situation the staff outlined. It is still one piece of property. It has, it has more than one zone on it, but it is still one piece of property. And if I could, I'm going to share a screen and show you some information that I have to help in my presentation. So if I do this, right? I think. Are you, are you seeing my screen now?
I see it.
Okay, so the, the yellow area is the same area that Sally outlined in red. That's, that's where the single-family house wants to go, and, and to the east of that, that's the property that Mrs. Griggs outlined is where the multifamily development has been approved on that piece of property. And then this is, this area here is the balance of the property that's, that's currently RA. And then this is where that other apartment project that was approved on the south side of Mildred goes. And then this is another chunk of land that's currently, part of all this is still RA. So the, the purpose of this request by the applicant was to construct a single-family house on the, on the single, on the RA portion of the property, noting, noting that, that the property is entitled to have a building permit. And since the apartment project is still working through its funding process and hasn't gone forward, then the idea was, okay, we build a, build a house. He had, he has a, a family that's in need of a house that, that has some special, has a special needs adult child, and so he was trying to, trying to do that. So that's what started this process in here. So the, we started working through with staff to get, to get to the point where we could do that, and, and the driveway access became an issue. So the, the request for the variance was made on the basis that, that we do believe that there are, that there are hardships on this piece of property that make it, that make it difficult and, and, and if not, nearly impossible to take access in another place. And I'm, I'm going to bring up another drawing that shows that. So this is, this is the partition plat, but I've, I've done some coloring on it to show some things. So again, this is the parcel that we're talking about. This is where the apartment project is, that's on the, on property that's zoned IC, I believe. And then this is the balance of the property, and here's Flarestone, and this is Mildred. So that, and this is Woodside. So that's all the things the staff was talking about. And, and so staff talked about the, the fact that we front on Woodside, we front on Flarestone, so there's opportunities for access to be taken that didn't require taking access onto Mildred. So we started, we started that approach and talked to, and made a presentation to staff on how we would take access from this piece of property into the multifamily site that we had, so it could take access out to driveway here. And we were told that we are not allowed to take a single-family access through the IC zone. So that was, so that access, irrespective of the fact that something will be partitioned, but now it's not. We were told that we weren't allowed to take that and access through there. So access one to Woodside is not available to us. We can't do that. Access two is to Flarestone, and, and, and that is true. We have access off of Flarestone. However, this piece of property sits on the east side of Walms Creek. I've outlined in here the limits of the 100-foot wide riparian corridor that sits along Walms Creek. I've shown here with my blue coloring Walms Creek itself. In order for this piece of property to access Flarestone, I would have to, have to construct a driveway through the 100-foot wide riparian corridor. The staff would have to grant us the right to do and remove native vegetation, which we would assume that they, they likely would, but that's not guaranteed, but we assume that that would happen. I would have to build a, an elevated crossing across Walms Creek that's wide enough to span the creek and any identified floodway that might, might exist there. I would have to build a crossing that's elevated tall enough that I would be, that the bottom of the crossing would be a minimum of three feet above the base foot elevation in there. And in order to do that, I'd have to build head walls and, and handrails and all this stuff to go with it to do that. We, we project that that, that to do that, by the time we got through the flood study, got all of that approved to build it, that we'd be spending $150,000 to $180,000 for that crossing in there. So in our world, for a single-family residence, that's becomes a economic impediment that can't be overcome because the value of the access to get across the creek is well more than the value of the land is for, for what you can do. So that's the hardship that we believe is, that exists out here that's unique to this piece that, that's, that, that supports the need for the variance. Now, that driveway approach criteria that's, that's in the, that's, the staff pointed out, follow, some of that follows the same, the same scenario. Criterion one is that, that, that meets the standards of the chapter. Well, we can't meet the standards of the chapter, but we, we claim that, that there's difficulty or hardships with the property that make it so that we couldn't meet the access to the standard, which is to take access from a local street and to not take access onto, onto, to the arterial. It would be noted, and, and, and it was talked about earlier, that if our, if, if what we were doing on this property created 30 ADT or more, then we would be able to, to justify access out onto, to Mildred from that standpoint, albeit the driveway spacing separation would still be an issue, but we would be able to do that. But we, we don't have, and that was one of those things that was a little bit hard to get, to get, to grapple around because less ADT is safer, is, is more risky than more ADT for an access. So we were, we, we were struggling with that, but that's, that issue is there. But we think, again, we think that there's, there aren't any real options for how to deal with that. We access on the outside of a, of a curve, so there aren't any sight distance. This issue's there for safety, for access, and this is all basically flat. Great. There's hardly any change in elevations throughout here. So there isn't any hillside. There isn't anything there that creates a problem for us in order to be able to have a safe egress. And, and we have, we offered before and continue to offer to have a condition placed on this that we would have to build a turnaround so that you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be backing out into Mildred. You'd be driving out into Mildred. Now, there is, there, there was, one of the criterias that we, we hadn't, and this, here's, I've said, we hadn't demonstrated that you can safely access under there, but we thought we had because there's this, there's this left turn pocket that occurs at Mildred and Woodside. And you can see that there's, there's fairly good extension of that left turn pocket that comes, that continues on down to the west end. Mildred there, and our driveways practically would come out here, and so there's, we felt there was ample up and safe opportunity for someone to pull out and to make it into the, to the lane to go east on Mildred. And if by chance they got stuck and there was, they got caught by someone coming, oncoming, they'd be able to, to safely pull out into the, into the left turn pocket that's remaining there, and then emerging that traffic when it's safe. So it's actually, it's actually a fairly, we think is a fairly safe way to get out of there. So we, we thought that, we, we thought we had provided information that would have demonstrated that. So again, there's no vision, there's no vision issue there. There's, their staff, staff admitted that in the staff report that we weren't creating any, any traffic hazards to other adjacent residential properties by this, by this access at this location. And then, then there is the, the, the criteria that to minimize the number of accesses onto our arterial, and we, and we understand that, and we don't disagree with that, but we didn't feel that adding another access onto Mildred at this point was going to treat, create any functionality issues with how Mildred functioned in, in, as it approaches commercial and back here. There are already some, some existing driveways onto Mildred. When you, when Mildred changes from Sunny Side coming, there's about 15 of them on there. But there aren't any, as you put here, so adding one more in here didn't, didn't seem to be that it was going to create any functional issues with, with Mildred in that location. So that's, that's really what we, what we offer here. I, I think it's not being able to get access for this, for this piece of property, and it's not a lot. We agree. It's not, it's not a created lot yet. When the partitioning gets done, this piece will be gone. It won't be part of it. It'll still be part of this, but, but in the bigger picture, even if we subdivided the property, we still have this problem. We have this lot on the east side of, of Walms Creek and the same economic constraints, and so you're not likely to develop the subdivision and spend that kind of money to create a driveway across there. So you have a piece of property that, that for all practical purposes is, is, at least in the short term, it's undevelopable. There are maybe some other alternatives in the future that could be considered, but they become, even they become difficult to, to see how you could economically change the zone to, to a higher density and then justify building more units and getting out of there because there's just, I got to find the rights, because there's just not enough space. I mean, I got a repairing corridor. I got floodplain and floodway, and this is the zone line right here, so I don't have enough space to build the type of development that would, that would make it justifiable to go through the process of a comp plan and zone change, and and then economically build an access, I mean, a building that generates 30 ADT and get out on the Mildred. So I, I think I have a piece of property here that for the most part is not going to be developable in the future. And that, that seems to be a poor use of resources for our community over a driveway that we don't think there's any other option for. So anyway, I'd be happy to answer questions that you might have of me.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions from the commissioners? I am not seeing a hand raised.
There's Commissioner.
I unshared my screen. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Heller followed by Commissioner Pollak.
Thank you. All right. Before I even, you know, think about the, the concerns about the driveway, I don't understand. There's a, an issue the staff raised about your, the land use application and you showed on your slide, talking about ownership of a, another company. It's JCT Construction. And that's on, where are they involved in this? Where do they come in?
Okay. They're, they own the, they own the, my sister, when, when the pro, the people that, that, it was an elderly couple that owned all this land and they sold it. And when they died, they, it got sold in pieces. And someone sold our client the northern half above Mildred and, and somebody else bought the southern side in that. And I, I will, to make it simple, I will share screen just quickly again, so you can, and make sure I do that. It's always. Let me try that again. So I'm gonna find the, let me find the right drawing here. So, so this, so JTC Construction owns, they own this piece of property.
Okay.
South side.
Okay.
And so that, so we, we, we add, they, we added them to the application. We were in a, in a, an effort to try to make sure we had all the right information together. So they, they were added to the application because I have multiple owners of, of a single piece of property by by fact of how they all bought it, not, not by the fact that they were legal parcels, but, but just simply the way they ended up buying it all. So that's what, that's what you have there. So.
All right. So they have, they have no ownership interest in the, your little yellow triangle?
Well, until the partitioning's completed, we, what I have is a single piece of property that has multiple owners.
Okay.
Or you could, you could, everybody might have an interest in each other's property until the partitioning's done.
Okay.
Although they bought them by deed, they, they create deeds and they brought separate piece of property, but legally it's still just one piece of property. So.
Okay.
Commissioner Heller.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you have a follow up?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Pollak.
I, I wonder if you could please, Mr. Grant, put up your topography of the, the, when did you showed us with the greenery of your land?
The, let me.
The last one you showed us with the green, with the little yellow.
Okay, hang on. I will do that. Is that? Is that correct there?
Hold on. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
So technically, eat, this, the way the creek is, is also creating another equally problematic piece of land across the street as well in that triangle on the other side of, of the creek and the developed houses. Is that true?
Uh, it, that, that would be, that would be true. I'm not, I'm not representing that.
I, I know you're not, but I'm saying this is full topography. It's an equally thing, it's thing and, and so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Grins, do you want to address the pieces of the application that were missing?
Um, I wish I, I wish I could. Brandy Dalton in my office is the one that ha, that handled the application prep and, and I believe that she, she had indicated to me that, that she felt that she had addressed all those issues. Now staff says no, so I'm not, I'm not able to, I'm not able to dispute what staff says today that I wasn't expecting that because we talked about that before and I thought that she said we had. I, I know that she talked to the neighborhood association about the application when we were going through this. But I don't, I don't know why she didn't provide that information to staff if, if she didn't. So I'm, I'm unfortunately unable to, to help you with that part.
Okay. Commissioner Schweikert, you have a question?
Well, um, yeah, actually my, my question was kind of building off of what Commissioner Griggs just was stating, which is that, you know, we're asked as a commission to make a decision based on the findings and there are at least five findings about the incompleteness of the application. And all, all of these findings, you know, kind of come to the same conclusion, which is that staff, uh, city staff notified the applicant that there was an incomplete aspect to the application and was then responded to that the applicant, the applicant was not going to provide any additional information. So I, I feel like in order for us to be able to make a decision tonight on this appeal, we would have to know how on January 29th, the applicant felt like their application that was provided did not require any additional information when staff is asking for five, saying that there's clarification on five things that were inadequate as part of the application.
So I know that we provided, I know that in the application packet, we provided the information that showed the, the overall site, which was one of the things that they wanted. And that we showed the shadow plat for how the property would be, how the property was being rid of. So I know that those things were done. Like I said, I know Brandy, you know, attended virtually a neighborhood association meeting about, about this application as well as, as well as some other applications on this particular site that we were, that we were involved in. I, I'm not sure why, why that information wasn't transmitted to staff if it, if it wasn't. So then it's down to, to the signatures that we had all the signatures of all the, of all the property owners and that one I can't answer. I, I don't know why that, why that information wasn't provided if it wasn't. I have, I have a, a lot of, I, I have a lot of confidence in Brandy and how she handles stuff. So I'm not really sure what happened there and why that's, why that's not in the file, but that, again, she's pretty good about making sure that, that the information was done. So the, and the fact that we responded by saying that we, that we asked the application to be deemed complete. Again, we, we, we do that when we believe that some of the information that's being requested is information that we either can't provide or that we, or that we don't feel is, is appropriate at time. But this, the type of stuff that was being asked for there doesn't appear to be this, the kind of stuff that she would normally say no to. So I'm not, I'm not sure about that. So and, and if I would have had an opportunity, I should have thought of that today. I should have had, made sure that she could, that could document her packet because she puts together a pretty thorough packet of information that she, that whenever she applies, supplies stuff to the city. So I can't, I, I can't rectify, reconcile the, the fact that it's not there. And, and yet that, that, that's usually, she's pretty thorough about that kind of stuff. So. You guys have seen our application packets before. She's pretty good about making sure she has all that stuff together. So I, I got caught off guard with that one today as I drew the straw for this presentation tonight. So.
The short straw, right?
Sometimes it's short, sometimes it's not, but.
Yeah. Any additional questions of Mr. Grins, of the applicant? And seeing no hands raised, I will move to the neighborhood association and we don't have anybody signed up to testify for the neighborhood association, nor do we have any other individuals signed up to testify in general. Now's our opportunity to ask additional questions of staff. Shelby, am I missing anybody? I don't see any hands up. Commissioner Schweikert.
Yes. So I, I, I did, I did want to bring up to let staff have, have an opportunity to comment on something that Mark had stated, which had to do with the ability to take access for a driveway through the multifamily apartment complex area that has, where the design has been approved. Because I did actually ask the question of Lisa while reviewing the materials for this appeal about what would be required to, to share a driveway because I, I want to make sure that it's, that it's a little bit more nuanced than it just couldn't be done. I don't think that that's actually the, the, quite the detail that, that, that staff has provided. So I don't know if it's Sally or Lisa that wants to take that, but to clarify about how access through the multifamily property would have, how that could have occurred.
Thank you for your question. Yes, I'm going to defer to Lisa. She was actually at the the design review meeting with you guys when that happened. And I think she would be able to explain it a lot more comprehensively than I could.
Thanks, Sally. Um, yeah. So the, as Sally showed in her, her presentation, the property is, is split zoned, you know, so it's larger property. And the apartments, they're located in the IC zone, industrial, commercial, and that allows housing, single family, multifamily, but only with a conditional use permit. So when the count, uh, commission, excuse me, approved the design of those apartments, it was actually, I think your very last apartment design review under the old code. You also approved a conditional use at the same time to allow that use on that property. So if the, if the applicant is going to propose to have a driveway for this use through there, they would need a conditional use for the single family use because anytime you are, you know, have a use, it has to be allowed in the zone and that includes any access to it, any parking for it, et cetera. So think of it this way, if you have a business, you can't just go put your parking across the street on a single family lot. You can't just tear down the house, right? And put your parking if that zone doesn't allow your business, that would be kind of disrupting the zoning pattern. So they would need a conditional use for that. We did talk to Mr. Grins about potentially doing that. The, the problem is that the way the apartments were designed, the only place that they would be able to put that access through would, would get rid of the landscape setback along the north property line and the open space for those apartments. So potentially a complete redesign of that apartment complex could accommodate a shared driveway and, and that might be a way to solve all of this, but our understanding is it's different owners. So I'm not sure the folks that haven't approved apartment design may be ready to build that necessarily want to start from scratch, redesign and try to accommodate their neighbors' access through there. So there would potentially be a way, but there would be more land use applications involved.
Thank you for that clarification. Other questions of staff, Commissioner and the Ben?
Thank you. Understanding that the partition plan has been approved or, or is tentatively approved. I would like to ask staff the, how you expect someone that develops what is parcel one to, to put something on the east side of Wall and Creek?
So staff's position is that by subdividing, they're creating the hardship. I, again, I wasn't part of that parcel or, or the partition application when it came in. It was another case manager. I think when you're developing property that has a creek running through it, it's, it's part of your design to make sure that you can cross waterways and create access to land on the other side of the creek.
Could you have a follow up, Commissioner and the Ben?
I feel like I do, but I don't have quite the, the structure of my question. So I'll, I'll defer at this time.
Okay. Additional questions of staff? Seeing no hands raised with the applicant like to rebut, and you have five minutes. You're on mute.
I'm, 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 I'm getting used to these video things. They work pretty good for the most, they shouldn't have cut down on travel time. But so I'm gonna, the, with respect to the, to the question about access to the IC, I'm gonna share screen again and I'm, I'm gonna share with you. This is the email that we received from Brandon Pike regarding taking access through the property that adjoining zone, zone property. And I don't see anything in here that says anything about a condition use. I see here that it, it states that, that access through a property is not allowed when the use associated with the access, single family is not permitted in the given zone. So there isn't anything in this email that says anything about you could do it. You could apply for a conditional use and that would make it work and you could redesign your apartment project to do that. That doesn't say that here. This, this is pretty much a, this is pretty much, it's not allowed. That's how we took it. So that, so that, that, anyway, that, we took that to be pretty, pretty straightforward. That it's, that it wasn't something that we were allowed to do. Now I'd, I'd asked to, that, to have the, to allow the planning commission to continue the hearing. I'll dig out that packet of information that Brandy put together and that was submitted and provide that information to, to the commission so that you, so that you know what we did. So that that issue gets cleared up because, like I said, if, if she was on the call, on this meeting tonight, she might have a better, be able to respond to that. But I, but I got a text from one of my other staff that said that, that they were pretty sure she had that information. So to ask for continuance and then we'll provide that, that additional information to try to clarify that particular issue there.
Okay. So we have that request to continue the hearing. Do you want the hearing continued or do you want the record left open?
You, which it, it doesn't matter to me, whichever is most convenient. If you, if you want to.
Lisa, the, if we left the record open, we would receive the information that the applicant's asking to provide, correct?
Right. If you leave the record open and there'd be no more testimony or questions of staff at the next hearing, it would just be deliberations. If you continue it, you could, if you want, receive verbal testimony and questions of staff. And I will point out, it's not the first public hearing on this case. So you don't have to do either of those. Usually you do when people ask if it's the first evidentiary hearing. He's already had a hearing it. Hearing's officer, so it's at your discretion.
Okay. I'm good with leaving the record open. I don't, not too keen about continuing the hearing, but would love input from my colleagues. If I don't get, have any input from my colleagues, I will, okay, Commissioner Heller. Followed by Pollak.
I'm okay with having testimony again. The, the rea, and the reason why is because we get the additional information, then that may raise questions, at least for me. So I, I'd like to just leave, continue the hearing if, if that's agreeable.
That's fine with me. Commissioner Pollak, you had your hand raised.
Equally so, because we don't know what they're going to provide us. And so it might be satisfactory, might not be satisfactory. Yeah. So, and so definitely continue rather than leave the record open.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Copcho.
I just want to also agree with my fellow commissioners on that. Considering we didn't hear anything from Cigna, it, it could provide an additional opportunity for the neighborhood association to, to make something known. So.
Sounds great. So it sounds like we have our request to continue the hearing and we'll do that. Lisa, do you want to do those date things?
Well, when it's continued, it's actually just to your. Well, when it's continued, it's actually just to your next, um, meeting date.
So that was canceled, so we.
It was going to be canceled May fourth, so.
So we will.
Now you've booked yourself a meeting.
Oh, yay. Okay, so.
Wait.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yeah, can I just have, is it proper for me to still ask staff a question?
Uh, yes, I have not closed the hearing.
Okay. So, um, Lee, this is actually for Lisa. You know how I pointed out across the street, uh, across the street, um, Mildred, where there's an equally problem, uh, challenge, challenging piece of property? Um, if we were to prove this driveway, would it create a precedent for that driveway? Because that driveway looks a lot more, it it does look, it it's dangerous. I mean, the, the, this one's concave and one's con- you know, so I'm just wondering, would it create a precedent to where that person, that owner could challenge?
I mean, po- potentially, but you know, they would have to apply for their own development plan, driveway approach permit, et cetera, and the, the um, factors may not be the same, the situation, you know, me, being on the other side of a curve and sight distance, et cetera, could be different, so it may not necessarily just mean that we would have to, you know, approve it if this one was approved. I don't know if Tony has added that on his analysis, but.
Excellent. That's exactly what I, what I was hoping. Okay, thanks.
Um, Commissioner Schweikert?
Um, I'm not sure if we need to take a, uh, do we take a, a vote then to continue the hearing? Is that something that we will need to vote on?
Yes, you need a, a motion and a vote to continue the.
Okay, okay. I, I wanted to, I just wanted to be clear on, on what the process was. Um, yeah, I, I think, okay, so this is still time for staff questions?
It is now, yeah, we'll give Mr. Grins another chance to rebut anything that is talked about at this point.
So, so I'll just clarify or confirm, um, with either Sally or Lisa that um, the, the items that were stated as incomplete, um, in the application, um, were something that the hearings officer reviewed and ruled upon, right? I mean, that's what it looks like from, uh, attachment three, the hearing officer decision. So that information at that time that the hearings officer was making their decision, they were making their decision on, on various items that were incomplete in the application and that that and that, and based on the fact that we all got the YouTube video, um, that was an opportunity for the applicant to provide an explanation of the incompleteness of the application. Um, and, and so I just, that's like, that all came out already in the hearings officer's discussion. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So before I look for that motion to continue the hearing, Mr. Grins, did you want to rebut anything else that was said after your last rebuttal? Is Mr. Grins?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm looking for a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make a motion that we continue.
And I need a second?
Okay.
Who was the second? I have a motion by Commissioner Levin and I, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Commissioner Pollak is the second. Shelby, would you please call the roll and signify by saying aye if you're in favor of the motion?
Commissioner Augustine?
Nay.
Commissioner Griggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Heller?
Aye.
Commissioner Copcho?
I'm thinking, um.
Want me to circle back?
Yes, please.
Okay, Commissioner Levin?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollak?
Aye.
Commissioner Schweikert?
Nay.
Commissioner Slater is absent and Commissioner Copcho?
Put me down as nay.
Okay, so what is that?
That's three noes, one absent and five yeses.
So the motion passed, correct?
Yes.
So did. Um, and you've got the record count there, so you've got that for your record. So we will move on to special orders of business, housing update. And Commissioner McKinley, will you take over being chair for a minute because my husband's trying to get on the can do meeting on his Zoom and he can't get it to work?
Sure.
I'll be right back.
Okay, um, special order of business. Go for it.
Um, so Yennis Kim, our long range planning manager, is prepared to report a housing update and I'll turn it over to her.
Great, uh, so I'm Yennis Kim, long range planning manager, City of Salem. Um, and yeah, every six to about nine months, we try to do an update of where we are with our housing needs. Um, stemming back to, uh, the need that was projected back in our housing needs analysis. So what you'll find in the memo is kind of a summary of our building permit information, our comprehensive plan, zone change, information related to multifamily and and other steps we've taken to make it easier to develop multifamily, much of which you've been involved in, um, uh, in the past. And so we also have like a brief update on our Salem as well as, um, House Bill two thousand and one. So we tried to capture a lot in there. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions? And I'm sorry, I don't have my chat thingy.
Commissioner Schweikert has a question or a comment?
Commissioners, Commissioners Schweikert?
Thank you, Yennis. Um, I, I, it, I wanted to just see kind of, um, what you all are hearing, you know, in your conversations with, um, uh, the development community about, um, you know, the utilization of the mixed use zone for multifamily development because I know that that's obviously, um, uh, an allowed use, um, and and of, and there's, you know, so many acres of land that we could possibly use now, um, uh, you know, to develop, uh, uh, multifamily uses within a mixed use zone. And so I'm just wondering, like, is, has there, have you heard that, um, in terms of, I, I mean, it's, it's still pretty new, but in those areas where we, uh, I guess have had the mixed use zone in place for the longest, you know, are, do you see applicants coming in and, um, and proposing multifamily as part of that mix of uses, uh, or I guess it doesn't have to be a mix of uses, uh, it could just be multifamily. But I, you know, I'd love to hear that because it seems as though, I'll just, to be blunt, less than seven acres a year of land becoming multifamily residential land between January twenty fourteen and March twenty twenty is a little, uh, discouraging, given the volume that we're looking to make up in the deficit. So I'm hopeful that the mixed use tool is something that will allow us to get to to make up that deficit at a more rapid pace.
Sure, um, so I can, I can speak to, I guess, the first part of your question was our, our new mixed use zones and where they are today, um, as opposed to where we're maybe proposing them in the future through our Salem. Um, the, I hope that's, that was the first part of the question. Okay, so we first applied them on State Street, um, as part of the State Street corridor plan. And we have not seen massive amounts of multifamily or any development or redevelopment in that area. I think there's a lot of reasons for that. I don't think zoning, um, is now a barrier. I think there's, um, economic reasons. There's, there's not really the incentives and and maybe the market at this point. Um, I'm hopeful that in the future and maybe with some more infrastructure improvements, um, that we've also adopted but not built yet in terms of the street design, um, would help. Um, we have had, uh, applicants, uh, like in West Salem, for example, actually apply to change their zoning to the mixed use, a new mixed use zone and develop, um, pro- proposed multifamily. And so, um, I think that people see the flexibility in that, um, and hopefully we will see more of that in the future. We are proposing a lot of mixed uses, you know, um, both on vacant land and on developed land as part of the Arsalan project. And again, I think repeatedly throughout this process, it's really that flexibility that people want to see. As you know, we will be considering potentially options to maybe make some locations mandatory housing um, in an effort to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, but that discussion, uh, is just going to begin, uh, at the end of this month, so. I don't know if I answered your question.
I think we should clarify, sorry, if I could clarify too, that, um, even though the, the private market has slowly converted land to multifamily, um, we, we are proposing through our Salem to convert all the land that's, that's needed in the H and A. So by the end of this year, the deficit, if it's, if the, our Salem is adopted, the deficit will be gone. So we, we've identified land, a combination of mixed use and then just straight, uh, multifamily land to meet that deficit. So it's not our plan to just let the private market slowly, slowly meet that need.
Yes, that's an important clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that, that is very, actually very helpful, uh, clarification, um, because I, I think that I was, I was, I was assuming that we were just talking about the private market, but I think that it's, you know, now that you're saying like there's this, there's a mix that, of what's going on, you know, here with, with, with our, um, our Salem update and and, um, and that's exciting, that's exciting. I think that's really exciting. I'm excited to see, um, what happens with, uh, with, uh, the changes to mixed use in other areas, um, of the city, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Schweikert, and thank you, Vice President McKinley, for covering for me. Um, other questions, are you are you finished, Yennis? Because I came in right at the tail, tail end. Other questions for Yennis? And I don't see any. Thank you. And we will move on to information reports we have, then. Public comment, we still don't have any people commenting from the public. Lisa, your reports, in addition to, we have now a hearing on May fourth.
Yes, yes, we now have a hearing on May fourth. Um, just a couple of dates and I should just let Yennis give them. Uh, just a reminder that our Arsalan Policy Committee meetings are ongoing every week. Tomorrow is transportation, right, Yennis? Actually, when I, tomorrow's transportation at noon and five thirty. If, um, you haven't been attending those meetings, they're pretty interesting, um, good conversations and live polling and lots of really good questions and comments on different topics. Um, you can also just watch them live on our YouTube if you don't want to actually log into the meeting. And then for those of you that are on our zoning subcommittee, our first meeting for that is, um, not this Friday, but next Friday, the thirtieth, although I forgot what time, um, noon, maybe.
Twelve to two, yeah.
Twelve to two. Um, and even if you're not on the committee, um, you can join the meeting if you want to speak, you can sign up to speak, or if you just want to watch it, it will be again, live on our, um, YouTube channel, so you can tune in for those, so. Um, those are our only, those are my only updates, I think.
Thank you, Lisa. Questions of Lisa? For Lisa? I'm seeing none. That's how good your report was. Uh, comments for the good of the order. I think that that, um, vote on the continuance hearing was the first time we've had a really, uh, a very colorful result. Very interesting. Um, okay, any comments for the good of the order? We'll all be here the day before Cinco de Mayo. We can just join with a non-alcoholic beer. I'm seeing no comments for the good of the order, so this meeting is adjourned and we'll see you on the fourth of May. Bye.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thanks.